So the first question is right away, how would you assess the job City Manager John Patterson has done so far?
My name is Robin Mundell and I'm the candidate for Ward One. The job that Mr. Patterson has done up to this point is, I don't think he's had a lot of direction from council in terms, in fact, I almost know that, that council has not had any planning sessions for the last two years, which tends to keep everybody on one schedule. And so I think that he has done more things maybe than might be within his purview and as opposed to getting projects completed, there's a lot, sort of a shotgun approach in terms of projects and getting them completed. And I think that the council needs to go back to the contract that they have with Mr. Patterson and review him accordingly like you would any employee to set goals and objectives and performance measurements so that he knows where he needs to be as opposed to just sort of kind of going out on his own.
And I'm Shay Snapp and I'm running for City Council in Ward Two. It's really hard to actually argue with the answer that was just given because I think that's a feeling that citizens in general have here in Casper. I do think that we, you know, as the new council comes in, for sure, they have to take his parameters and really set that contract in front of them. This is, you know, what your job is based off, this is what you do. I do agree with some of his vision. I don't think that he has necessarily followed the words that he said though. And also, I don't like the behaviors that he has behind closed doors.
Let me just follow up on that real quick. So when you talked about some of the things you haven't disagreed with, what have those been?
Well, the first, the first couple of sentences, that phone call, "I'm calling you because I don't want this to be in writing," that right there was every red flag. How many other calls are there? How many other things that we don't know about? So that right there was a huge red flag for me and for anybody I think that's heard it.
Ray Pacheco, running for City Council in Ward Three. And an answer to your question, you know, I'm not, I don't know Mr. Patterson personally from talking to him, so don't disparage him as his character, but from the feeling of in my ward and the people that I've talked to, just has not been a real positive image of the city manager. And so I think that that's been a big thing and I've been talking to a lot of people going door to door and having that sentiment. Again, you know, I have to agree with Robin. I don't think there's been, for the last two years, been an annual review of his job performance and I think there's no guidance to say, you know, "We are your boss and this is what we need to do. We trust you, we want you to carry out what we ask you to do," and I don't think that's been done effectively in the last two years especially. I think he means well, I don't know if there's a lot of direction, and I do question some of his tactics Shay had mentioned, which I don't think fall in line with our values and integrity here in Casper. And he had big shoes to fill with Tom Forrest and he did a wonderful job running our city for a lot of years. And so it, you know, some disappointment in that.
So what I'm hearing is not fire Patterson, but what I'm hearing is certainly let's initiate a review process.
Absolutely, and I think we all said that really, I think at the forum when we were talking with Carol that ran it for us, we basically were saying, you know, there are a couple of people that were kind of maybe going after that, but I think it's more a question of, look, we see some potential there, but we want to also, if we got on City Council to really kind of say, "Look, here's the direction we're looking at and you're an employee of the city and this is what we expect from you."
And there is some perception too, if I might add, in the community that he is the one who seems to be in charge and running the council as opposed to the council running, you know, him being an employee of the council. Council employs the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal judges. And there, it appears, at least to the people in the community, that he is more in charge than the council is. So a lack of leadership on council.
Next question, how would you approach the Craig Hedquist conflict of interest issue, which continues?
Well, first of all, he's obviously in my ward. Craig happens to actually live across the street from me. I don't think that he should have ever gone into the ward. I don't think, I mean, he doesn't even attend enough meetings, so he's not truly a voice on our, for our ward. So that's the first frustrating thing. The second thing is, until there's criminal charges, I think we need to stop wasting our time. He's not really representing our ward. He's just wasting time, deflecting from the real issues that are going on in our ward and in our city. I would, like I said in the paper, I would ask that Craig just step aside and let somebody else start speaking and attending the meetings since he won't. You know, he attended three of the last 10. Okay, I mean, he's just wasting our time and our seat. It's a valued seat on our ward and it's not being used.
Well, I think there's a couple of ways you could have handled it, and I think this was, I said this to Tom Dixon when he was interviewing us. One of the things that I had mentioned, the reason I got involved and wanted to run for City Council is I really felt like it was, they were wasting our time, the City Council. And when you look at that and you sit and you say, okay, they have taken this last year really and have set aside for this issue. And I really, and I think I said this and Tom quoted me on it, I said, "It seemed more like a junior high battle." And I think that that is a sad state. Why people are so cynical about American politics is because of infighting and things like that that don't get done. The mayor had mentioned he thought that it was overblown in the media. Well, something happened and, you know, it was, it was a mess. So how would I have handled it? I would have handled it as a mature professional, to be able to say, "This is what we're trying to do. I don't know all the issues, I don't know all the things in it." I tell you, I would have handled it a lot differently, a little bit more tact, professionalism, character and integrity, and it was not handled that way. Case in point, why the people at every single ward, I guarantee you, are saying they're tired of the City Council.
As far as I'm concerned with Mr. Hedquist and the council issues, I think it could have been taken care of by council leadership in a closed door and just said, "These are the boundaries, these are the lines and you can't cross them. If you cross them, then we're going to have to go to the next step." But that being said, is that the voters of Ward Two had enough confidence in Mr. Hedquist at the last election and elected him. And whether or not he should continue as their representative, they can do that in two years. If he were to run again for council, they could vote against him. So trying to, you know, establish council now is having some discussion at the last work session about their code of ethics and tightening up the way that they should, can do business to remove a councilman. And I thought Mr. Hedquist made a good point when he said, "So if someone doesn't follow along with what the marching orders might be of leadership, that council could find a way to actually get rid of that council person." And what you have done is, and you have eliminated the voters who are the ones who put him there to begin with. And so we always have to protect the rights of the people who voted for him to be there. Don't agree with what he's doing, don't know all of the history, but that's it.
Let's talk about our downtown economic development and looking specifically at downtown. The City Council has more or less gone into the real estate business with some of the purchases they've made, looking at the Ave building, the food warehouse, Star Apartments. What role should the City Council have in developing downtown? I'll start with you.
I think they have to play an integral part in that, in the development of our downtown. And I know I said this in the forum, and a lot of people did say this as well, but I think it has to be a combination of working together with local business people, you know, private interest groups to be able to come together and say, "Okay, how can we reestablish and revitalize all parts of the downtown?" And I think that takes a leadership role from the City Council. And it's a balancing act, I think, where the government doesn't overstep its boundaries and allow private enterprise and private business and business to really take hold and to do those things. And so the city ultimately, to put in, basically in a nutshell, has to play that integral part of working together in a partnership with private owners and investors, I'm sorry. Sorry, Robin.
Well, obviously downtown is in my ward, so I have a very keen interest in it. And in looking at the downtown, the City Council hired Crandall and Rambula, I believe, were the consultants who came in, and it was the city who paid for it. So when you look at, the city is paying for a consultant to come in, that whoever has the gold is the one who gets the results that they want. And if indeed that's what the city wanted was, or the city staff and Mr. Patterson and council wanted to have a convention center in the downtown, there was a huge vision about, you know, a large grocery store and promenades and those kinds of things. I don't think all of those ideas should be kicked to the curb, but it was certainly a lot more money than what our particular community is ready to invest in. And I'll go back to my experiences when I lived in Boise, Idaho. In 1985, the downtown was in a very low time of its life. And then Mayor Dirk Kempthorn came in and the city did what the city should do. They invested in infrastructure, they invested in better traffic flow, they invested in ways that could make, like for instance, the public plaza, where they built the public plaza and, you know, eventually then it was private enterprise who anchored each area of the public plaza. I went back in 2008 and the downtown area in Boise is way different than anything I ever remembered. It's vibrant, there were people there, there were things going on, and getting people to understand the uniqueness of our downtown, I think, is important. I told Tom, I said, "I don't think we should be making every building look the same because you need to keep that uniqueness, but you need to allow for the private investment and the private enterprise to come in. Make it, make it right and they will come."
For me, I'm definitely a huge supporter of the downtown area. I would love for it to be developed more. I do think that we have to, we're going to have to partner up with other people, obviously. But I think we need to make it still Casper, it needs to still be our hometown downtown. It shouldn't become the next Sixteenth Street Mall. I've heard that over and over again, shut down streets. I don't agree with that, that's not who we are. I do think it should be for local businesses, I do want to keep it local, just because this is my hometown and that's, you know, those are my personal feelings. So I do think the city should be investing, they should be going after the infrastructure, they do need to maintain the traffic flow. All of those things need to happen. I, until the convention center kind of changed, I did not agree with it before. Now that it is a moneymaker in the long run, I do, for the city coming in and paying. I say that just because that's what the people in my ward said, that they didn't want it. Now that I've gone out and I understand it a little better, I've been explained, well, we did buy, you know, we are leasing it, this is going to become a moneymaker for us. People are now starting to change, "Oh, okay, we like that idea now." So I think the city has to always work together with private.
Keeping in mind the size of the city's investment in CADA, how would you evaluate its performance?
Is it my turn? I think it is. Economic development and the promotion of bringing in businesses that are going to create jobs and to diversify our economic base away from just strictly energy is really important and it's a big job. And up until this year, CADA has always been supported by one cent money. Now we are paying an extra penny or two as a part, or some, an extra tax in our electrical bill, and that money goes directly to CADA, so one cent money will no longer go to CADA. CADA, I think, has had some hiccups. I think the vision is still there, would like to see them to be able to bring in more businesses. I think that we need to maybe not focus on those great big employers all of the time, but rather build a basis of, you know, big or small, we'd like them all, looking at, you know, maybe there's a technology company that isn't going to bring 100 jobs, but if it brings five jobs or 10 jobs, that's what's important. And we start multiplying that by many smaller businesses and we have got a strong economic base.
Well, obviously, the positive thing with CADA first and foremost for me is that one cent money will no longer have to be used for it. That's a huge deal, especially with one cent still being up in the air, whether it's going to go through. I do agree with the small business idea, you know, there are some really great businesses out there. A friend of mine, tech business here, there's six of the guys here. Those are, they don't just, that's not just six people, that's their families that come too, that's other money that goes back into our community because they shop and live here. So obviously, economic development's huge. I do like some of the larger businesses. Some, you know, because there are some great conveniences and they definitely have some huge savings, you know, so there are some perks. But I really don't see, there's really not any, except for the hiccups, as she puts it. I think that CADA needs a stronger foundation and leadership within them right now because they're, being, like, when we're speaking, we're kind of all over the place, that's exactly how you are when you go there. Everybody has an idea. We've got to narrow those ideas down into a game plan and stay with that game plan because everyone has so many ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of CADA and I think CADA does a great job. I mean, they obviously are not perfect as any entity, but I think the city has a symbiotic relationship, should have that symbiotic relationship with CADA. Without business, the community doesn't grow. And there's so many pieces within the city that play a part in that, and so CADA plays that integral part, bringing in businesses that, like Robin had mentioned, whether that's a big business, whether it's a smaller business, but using that. And I think it's a smart investment on the city's part to work with CADA, and I think that it's important that we do do that. And so CADA has a lot of positives, and I think the positives outweigh those negatives. And, you know, other than that, I think it's very supportive of CADA. And I do, I have to agree with it, I think helping them to set those visions, and the city has a vision of what we can do, is very, very important and vital.
Next question, talk about homelessness and the cost of social services. So it certainly costs the city to respond to homelessness in a variety of formats, including police. What should the City Council's role be in dealing with homelessness and is it doing too much now, too little now? Or we have Shay?
Well, just from a personal starting place, I guess, starting place, I guess, for me with homelessness, we don't really have a true resource center. There are so many places that the homeless have to go to or can go to. I mean, there are, you know, you can go, everyone knows about them, but it'd be great if we had one place that was better at getting people up. And I say that because, you know, we've got, I mean, Rain Free is like for women, the self-help center, or, of course, they know all the places that you can go. They, there's too many people, it's too fragmented. I think that if we centralized it more, it would be less fragmented. With that being said, I think it's the responsibility of our community, not just the City Council, to be taking care of homelessness. There are a lot of groups out there that do a lot for it. Are we doing too much? I don't think that we're doing too much by any means. I mean, homelessness drags down the community in so many different ways, I don't think that you can necessarily do too much. But I don't think it's just the responsibility of the City Council, it's the responsibility of the community.
You know, that's a tough question. I've been involved in social services for a long time and my background is social work, you know, and I think homelessness is one of those things, it's like drugs, it's like the thing in a sense, it's hard to define and try to figure out and try to end, you know, and it's very difficult. I used to be a teacher and I taught issues on homelessness and we talked about it. So the question is, I think the city has to play a part in it. I don't think they're the answer. I think they have to play a leadership role, whether that is awareness in the community and some financial backing. I don't think they can shoulder all of that to end homelessness. I think some of those one cent funds do go towards social services, which is important and vital in supporting that. And so, and I think Shay's right in the sense that the community has to play that part as well to help homelessness and to end homelessness. I mean, you look at, and I think these aren't concrete numbers, but you look at 400, some kids, teenagers who are homeless in the community, which does not mean that they don't have a house, but they're couch surfing or they don't have a place they call home, and it's out there, it's real. And I don't know if a lot of Casper citizens realize that, and I think the city has to play that role. I think they have to make some investments. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to give you a political answer. I don't know what the answer is. If I did, I would probably have the Nobel Peace Prize and wouldn't be sitting here with you. But I think what I do know is important is that we have to work together as a community, as a government, to try to overcome those things.
Well, homelessness is an issue that I have been involved with since 1985 and I have watched us continue to put money towards homeless projects and you can, you put money towards something and you're trying to, you're expecting different results and it's sort of the definition of insanity. What it really gets down to is that the city has a facility already, it has Life Steps Campus that is centrally located, it has bus service there, it has healthcare there, and that probably should be the one place where you could make a central point of entrance. Because you have people who can go all over the community to try to access services, you actually end up with some people who are not quite as willing to get up on their own and get a hand up, they're looking more for the handout. So you have the repeaters who are using up a lot of resources. You know, do we need to have six or seven food banks? I don't know that that is necessary because then they go from one place to another and to another and to another. Trying to count the number of homeless, I have been involved in the statewide homeless counts, it is an impossibility practically. We've had people going out and knocking on doors and looking under bridges and so on, and it's phenomenal when you see the number of people in our community. That being said, on the other side, we have got a lot of agencies and perhaps the city's role could be a way to facilitate that we can maybe change some of the direction so that what we're doing is we're really giving that hand up, not the handout. And how many places, again, do we need, you know, transitional housing? That says, "You're only here for a short time." I think we should be looking at, there's a project called Housing First, and I know that a small steps have been taken by the Community Action Partnership, and that is an agency that I see that should probably take a lead role. And that is get people into housing first. And then, like you would do with anyone else who has a disability, you bring in case management services and look at the needs of that particular family or that person, and if it is, they need jobs, they need education, those kinds of things, start to put that together into a plan of independence, but they never lose their housing because they fall backwards. This is a population that does not, they go forward, but for every step they go forward, there's at least two or three back, and it's very difficult for whatever reasons to try to get forward. But if they have enough encouragement, if they have enough support, they will move forward and actually can be, they want to be productive people. Now, there is a group or a portion of the homelessness that are chronically homeless who are in, you know, drugs and alcohol, PTSD, 30% of our homeless are veterans. We've got to be working with then the Veterans Administration, a lot more pointed efforts. Wyoming has lost a lot of money when it comes to the continuum of care funding that comes from the federal government because we have not been able to get our act together. And as much as we try to have a continuum, for some odd reason, it just gets fragmented. And so somehow, the role of the city could be, "Let's try to eliminate those fragments and let's start to all be working in the same direction."
The final question on my list, Hogedon. Recreational opportunities, obviously, Hogedon Skierie is a big one here and a big topic here. What should the city do with Hogedon? How is the council, or has the council already done too much or too little?
Well, let me first start off with, I don't agree with demolishing it. I don't think we just need to get rid of it and say, "We're done with Hogedon." You know, a lot of people say, "Well, it's a money loser, it's not great." I mean, I think 15 minutes away, 10, 15 minutes away, we have a great place to go up skiing. When the weather's great, when we have a great season, it's great skiing up there. And so it's a great investment. It can be a great investment if it's utilized, and it may not just be, you have to be utilized during the summer or during the winter, but also in the summer months for hiking, bike trails, other things. And that may mean having to invest in other things and Alpine Slide, things that we can think about, that can draw more people up to the mountain during those, during the off-winter months. So I think that's important. So I'm a supporter of Hogedon, I think it's great. You know, I think we have to be very careful, it didn't look great when the council had spent $75,000 to have a consultant come in to say, "Okay, this is what you need to do here and here." I think that right there goes to show you where people sit there and they get upset and they're just like, you know, "What are they doing? Why are they spending their money? They're spending our money doing this." And so we have to be very careful. So I think Hogedon is a rich resource for our community and for Casper. I think we just need to utilize that and brainstorm to say, "How can we do it?" And that may mean having to put a little bit of money in to where we're going to have to change it and what we can do for it, whether that be the lodge and so forth. But I don't think you have to go crazy. I don't think it has to be this major, beautiful, Teton Village type lodge, but it has, it can be Casper, Casper feel to it. And I think we can get there, but I don't think we need to spend $75,000 for a consultant. I just did not think that was appropriate.
And I'm a lot in concurrence with Mr. Pacheco. We do not need to have a Taj Mahal, we need to have something that's functional. Hogedon is owned by the city, it is our responsibility, and until we no longer own it, we need to be taking care of it. That being said, we know that the priorities of allocating funding to it in past years has been less as far as council is concerned, and now it is like the roof that had the little drip is now a big hole in the roof of the building, and so it's got to be, it has to be taken care of. I see it as a jewel of our community. Casper Mountain in itself is a jewel, and we need to be able to utilize it all season. If we want to expand, one way we could make more money would be is if we want to expand the skiing season, right now, we're pretty much at the mercy of whatever the good Lord brings us in terms of snow, but we also have snowmaking equipment. But the snowmaking equipment is only as good as the amount of water that you have going to it. And so we need to have another water source in order to get enough to make more snow and then you can expand it on both ends. The other thing is, it seems like right about the time the snow is prime, it's closed. And I think that needs to, that needs to be reviewed a little bit closer as to, when do you close? When you've got a lot of snow up there, why are you closing it?
Well, my family and myself have been avid, you know, snowboarders for 25 plus years, so Hogedon is something important to me. I know it loses money on one hand, but I also think that it saves our community a lot more than people realize. There are buses that leave the rec center that take kids up there constantly. Those kids could be doing a lot of other things that could be causing our city damage. You know, idle hands, what happens with, you know, teenagers have idle hands. My daughter rides that bus up there all the time. And she has got this huge group that goes with her, there's multiple buses that go. So I obviously am a supporter of it. I do not think they should have paid $75,000 to, you know, get a consultant. I go there all the time. I could have told you it's a dump, you know, that's obvious. We could do some, there are a lot of options up there, we can do a lot smaller. It's not, it's not huge in regards to people hanging out in the lodge. We're not looking to be in Aspen where we are going to have a lodge and a bar and all of that. Really, we just need people, a place for people to grab their lunch and have some lockers to put their gear in when they're going up and down. It doesn't need to be something that is over the top crazy. I also, as a user, do believe, we have really great prices at Hogedon. Adding an extra $10, $20 to people who are actually using the facilities, I would do it in a heartbeat. Just to have something where I can send my daughter for three or four months, where this is something she loves and she's, you know, doing something positive and energetic, why wouldn't I pay another $10, $20? I understand there are some families that cannot, and, you know, there are options, you know, I know that they're, they had a few people come in and do some donations last year. Instead of doing a full ski pass, they could just, you know, take $100 off, whatever. So I am a supporter, but I also think that Hogedon is so underused. Go to Aspen, go to Breckridge, those things are used all year round. You've got mountain biking, you've got the Alpine Slides, you know, we can be ziplining, we can have an outdoor, you know, the gym area. These are all things that we could, the muddy runs, we could have, you know, the outdoor volleyball tournaments up there. I just, I can't even understand why we don't use it for this stuff. And as somebody who's an MS chairperson, we have been trying to get Mudfest here for so long, but we just haven't found the ideal place to do it.
Thank you. So now is a chance for you to have some closing comments and then tell us, sell us. Why you? Why should anyone else vote for you? Robin will start with you.
Oh, good. Thank you, Jeremy.
You bet.
Gave me about 37 seconds to get my thoughts together. I'm going to ask for your vote for Ward One. I believe that I can represent you fairly. I am a fiscal conservative, I still also have a strong place in my heart for the social services in our community, and that we just really need to be able to facilitate and to make, get better communication between our community and our City Council. We need to be, the council needs to be a working for you and not mired in things that are not really related. We need to get back to the business of being a city and taking care of it. The city is a $185 million business. As not, one of the nine people who is charged with watching over that business, I bring to you a business experience, I bring to you experience and just, and life experiences as well. I think common sense is what needs to be applied and I, that I have that. I just ask for your vote.
Oh, guys, like, put this on the spot, huh? Oh, guys, like, put this on the spot, huh? I am running for city council Ward Two because I love Casper, and I hate what I've watched over the last couple of years. It's been, you know, it's been hard coming back here, we left as a military family, and I gotta see the world, and I chose to come back here to watch the last four years, the change and the animosity between the city and the city council. I also am somebody who is really active in our community, I do talk to a lot of people, I do run a group with five hundred members, I'm active on the MS board, so I hear a lot of different voices, I'm not just with the young, or the old, or the in-between, I, I hear all of those voices, and that's what I wanna do, I don't wanna represent myself, I wanna represent, you know, the voice of my ward, and then the voice of Casper itself.
You know, I was born, born and raised Casper, and one of the things that, that I found is that Casper is my home, and, and what I mean by that is, four years, when I left for college, four years, for four years, between ninety-eight and two thousand, or ninety-eight, excuse me, ninety-four and ninety-eight, I chose to come back, and I have raised my family here, I've sought to be here, and so this is my home. And so, being that, I wanna invest in, in my community, and the best way I know how to invest in that is to give back to the community by running for office. And I have not been happy with what I've seen happen on the city council, the reason I ran after talking to so many people is because I really feel like we can do a better job, we can do a better job representing our wards, we can do a better job of showing that we have integrity, that we have values, that we have character when we deal with conflict, and how we do those things. I'm saddened, my undergraduate is in political science, and I think politics and democracy are, an amazing way to do things in our society. Democracy will prevail when it comes to this, because I think people are upset, I think people want change, and I think change is coming. And it's not a cliche, but I think change is coming because people are upset, and when they see that, then change will happen. And so when they cast those ballots in August nineteenth, and even in November, I think you'll see that change happen. And that's why I'm running, I wanna be able to bring that positive change, I don't have all the answers, like I said, I also have the Nobel Peace Prize sitting right here with me, but what I can tell you is, it can be something better than what we currently have right now. And with that, I hope we can make some differences for our community and for our children.
Thank you, thank you very much.